Honolulu City Councilman Trevor Ozawa is trying for a second term against challenger Tommy Waters for the seat representing East Honolulu from Hawaii Kai to Waikiki. Ozawa beat Waters by just 41 votes in 2014. City Councilman Brandon Alefante is also trying for a second term against challenger Kelly Kitashima for the seat representing Aia, Pearl City, and Waipahu. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha, welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Darrell Huff. Four of the nine seats on the Honolulu City Council are up for election this year. Two races were settled in the primary. The other two will be decided in November. We will spend the first half hour tonight hearing from the two candidates for District Four, incumbent Trevor Ozawa and challenger Tommy Waters. After a quick change, we move to District Eight featuring incumbent Brandon Alefante and challenger Kelly Kitashima. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at pbsy.org and the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. As usual, we want to acknowledge our volunteers. They're waving happily there. Who will be taking your questions tonight, PBS Hawaii family and friends? There you see a shot of them eagerly awaiting your input to tonight's show. Now to our guests, the candidates for District Four, which runs from Hawaii Kai to Waikiki. Tommy Waters lost to Trevor Ozawa by 41 votes last four years ago. Waters is an attorney and former member of the State House of Representatives, and Trevor Ozawa chairs the powerful Budget Committee on the City Council. He is also an attorney who specializes in civil litigation. So let's start off, and I'll give the challenger the first shot. What do you think, what do you see as the biggest challenge in this district? And, you know, why are you running? And what kind of change would you want to bring?
Well, as you mentioned, I ran for, we ran four years ago, and it was 41 votes. I mean, that was almost 17,000 people who liked what I had to say. And initially, I wasn't going to run, you know? But I was encouraged by people in the district to give it another shot. And people, while I was walking door to door, they still remembered me, so it was great. But as I'm walking door to door, and I've, geez, knocked down about 8,000 homes so far, and homelessness is the number one thing, right? I live in the Kahala Towers, right across the street from Kahala Mall, and there's people living in our bus stop right there, under the bridge by Aloha Gas Station, and up in the top of Wilhelmina Rise. You've got homeless people coming out of the bushes up there. Diamond Head Road, you've got homeless people on the Maokaa and Makai side of the road. And, you know, it doesn't seem to be getting better, and that really, really concerns me, and it concerns our constituents.
Yeah, Trevor Ozawa, I know that that's been an issue for you at the council. Where, how do you feel, do you agree that that's the biggest issue facing your district?
I think the biggest issue facing our district specifically is with regard to monster houses at this moment. It's impacting everybody, from Hawaii Kai through Kamaki and Kapo Hulu area. It's putting a strain on our infrastructure. It's not only an eyesore and blocking people's views, but it has a tremendous impact on the real property tax assessments. It's not uncommon for an assessment to double practically overnight once it's built. And so that's impacting our seniors that can't afford their property taxes today on fixed incomes, as well as our younger generations that are trying to get into a house in this district, which is seemingly more and more difficult as those pop up.
I couldn't afford my parents' house today. Both great issues. We're going to go explore those issues some more a little bit later on. Let me move on first off to an issue that has divided the council, divides the council from the mayor regularly, the rail issue.
Yes.
Tommy Waters, where do you stand on rail? Are you, are you a full-on opponent to the system as it's going so far? And how do you feel about the cost overruns and delays?
Oh, my gosh. You know, I think we have to get to Middle Street and reassess the route going to Alamoana then to the university. I'm concerned about the budget overruns. I'm really concerned about how we're going to pay for the operational and maintenance costs. Where are we going to get the money? I know they're talking about HEAT, talking about P3, right? Public-private partnerships, but seriously, where is the money going to come from? I read an interesting article by Neil Milner, right? Saying that, geez, you know, if we're putting all our eggs in that basket, we better think twice about that, and I'm really concerned about that.
Are you literally saying that you would favor stopping it if you couldn't get good answers, the construction?
Well, no, I think we should just make sure we do it well, as fiscally responsible as possible. To me, I'd love to see it go to the University of Hawaii, right? Everybody knows that traffic is much better when the university's not in session, right? I mean, from either side of the island. So if you don't make it to the university, I mean, I almost think, why do it, right?
Trevor, where do you stand? I mean, Hawaii Kai isn't directly affected by the rail, but you haven't been staunchly against it, but also you've raised a lot of questions about how it's going.
Right, well, I've been an independent voice on the council, you know? And I can tell you this, fiscal responsibility is crucially important. What we've done this year for the first time, as I was chairing the Budget Committee, was actually reallocate part of the operating budget in HEAT to reduce it to reflect truly operational costs, and same with capital budget. So we've overhauled that. I got the HEAT board meetings on Olelo to provide more transparency and openness so that everybody in the, you know, on the island can see what's going on in these meetings that are in the middle of the day when people are working. And also, I've committed to, you know, not using property taxes for the construction of rail. That, to me, is the most fiscally responsible thing to do from here on out. The mayor is pressuring us right now to pass that, and it was a promise that he made to the constituents in two mayoral elections, and it's beyond the scope of what people actually voted for when they said, "Let's do the rail." It was always based on GE tax, and I think that's what people had intended and expected. And now we're kind of doing a little bit of a bait and switch here.
Okay, Tommy Waters, particularly on the issue of property taxes for rail, and right now, we're only talking about $44 million worth of property taxes, right? But would you draw the line there? Do you think that it's okay to use property taxes to help pay for rail?
Well, there's an ordinance, 17-01, that says you cannot use property taxes for rail. I'm curious, though, because I think there was a, what do they call it? A floor draft proposed by Ernie Martin that was heard in the Budget Committee, which would change that. And it sounded as if you were a proponent of changing 17-1 to allow property taxes for rail.
It's actually 07-1.
07-1.
It was passed in 2007.
Last thing anybody wants to hear is bill numbers, but.
Right, right, no, but I'm just, I'm just saying that it was, it's over 11 years old. This, that's the point. It's not about, you know, the correct number, but 11 years ago, and that's important, Darrell, is that's when, that's when the rail was beginning, and people were of the understanding property taxes wouldn't be used for the construction of rail. Said specifically, general excise tax surcharge. That's what they voted on. Now, I'll be very clear. I don't support using real property taxes for the construction of rail.
I didn't hear your answer on that question.
I do not support property taxes for the use of rail either.
How do you both feel about already sort of getting going on continuing onto Manoa? How do you feel about that?
Well, I think that at this, you know, that's what the voters voted on, right? That it would go to Manoa. And now we've got this, you know, minimum operable segment that ends at Alamoana. And as we go along, the rail budget just continues to increase and increase. And as we said, every year, it's a year-to-year basis. Every year, there is a process in which we look at how things are going. Every single year, it's been in the financial plan that bonds would be floated, and every single year, we look at it. So right now, the bonds that are being floated are for construction up and until Middle Street. I've always said that we should look at P3. We should look at all of our options. Seriously, would it really cost, as the mayor says, $20 billion to go from Middle Street to Alamoana Underground or to UH? I'm open to looking at other alternatives, too, running along the H1, hitting the hospitals, and eventually getting to UH that way.
Okay, that's the last, last word now on rail. Do you favor, I mean, you, I would have a question about it going beyond Middle Street, but would you like to see it get to Manoa? Do you think that there's ways to do that?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I am concerned because the city council approved this building right near Alamoana Shopping Center that basically would cut off the route directly to the university. So, you know, I'm hearing two different things, right? We want to get to Manoa, but yet we aren't providing the right route to get there, and that, that's really concerning to me.
Okay, so I'm starting to get viewer questions already, which I'm very happy about. So Trevor Ozawa, you mentioned the monster homes, which also brings up this whole issue about the building code and enforcement of building code and so on. And so a caller calls in and asks, "Regarding possible building code violations, I've visited many open houses with incomplete second kitchens, often only missing a fridge. How should we address the issue of constructing multifamily buildings in area zone for similar, single-family houses?" I know you just passed something yesterday, but I mean, is that going to be far enough? I mean, is it, are we, are we done with seeing these kinds of flagrant violations?
Yeah, Darrell, so I was, I've been the lead on the fight against monster houses at the city council. We introduced multiple pieces of legislation, one of which went, which was actually one of the first, my second bill, but the first one to really look at a long-term solution, which is Resolution 17-276, I believe, which is basically was a land use ordinance amendment. It went to the Planning Commission, and it's been with the Planning Commission for nine months. We're having a, we're having it come back to the city council anytime now. And in this, in this draft bill that I proposed, are restrictions on the floor area ratio, well, some of my additions to the original bill. Also, we're looking at changing the development standards so that an R5-zoned lot, you can't put two single-family detached dwellings on a lot of 7,500 square feet. I'd like to increase that to 10,000 square feet, which is more in line. Bottom line is, Darrell, if this bill passes, which I hope that it does, it's going to be a long-term permanent solution to prevent these from ever being constructed. In addition, one of the big issues with monster houses is that they completely concrete over the entire property. In my proposals, it's going to be, it's going to be that there's a limit on the amount of concrete that you can have or permeable, non-permeable surfaces. And that's so important for places like Kamaki that get flooded when you have these concrete structures.
Your thoughts on that issue, the monster homes, building codes?
It absolutely is a big issue, and they've proliferated in the last four years since, since the incumbent's been in office. They're popping up all over the place. To me, it's an enforcement issue. We got the rules on the books. The Department of Planning and Permitting needs to enforce them. Look at what happened on Date Street with that home that was built without even a building permit. Why was that done? Why was that allowed? Really? Remember the temple in Palolo that was required to take off their roof because it was lowered? Why can't we simply enforce it? The laws are on the books already. It's an enforcement issue.
Do you, do you agree with that?
I agree, and, you know, the person in charge of enforcement is the mayor, and I look to him for his leadership, and if he can go ahead and enforce it, I hope that he does. I've, I've asked him to. I've asked him on other occasions for DPP to do certain things. He and DPP haven't been on the same page specifically.
Let me ask, sorry to interrupt, but on that point, I mean, one of the things that seems to be a problem is even if you have a violation, the way the city building department would deal with it has been, oh, if you correct it in 30 days, then we'll make the fines go away, and then we'll, we'll add some fines. Now, I know that if you get a cease and desist order under the recent law, it would come down, but do you, when you talk about the laws are in place, is it the administration that hasn't been doing a good job enforcing?
You know, unfortunately, I believe so. I think they could definitely do a better job enforcing these laws. I mean, I'm walking door to door, right? And people are telling me they're having the most difficult time getting a permit to just do a small fix to their house. And where I live at the Kahala Towers, our pool is sitting empty because they can't get a permit to fix it. But yet they got these permits for these monster homes, right?
Or not.
Which is ridiculous to me.
Okay.
Or not.
Let me move on. I want to get to these. These are good, thanks. Which candidate is going to put an end to the illegal short-term rentals? I kind of put this on the top because we're talking about building codes and so on that are destroying our neighborhoods. Briefly, as briefly as you can, what's the answer to the illegal vacation rentals?
Well, a large part of it is related to monster houses, and I just want to clarify, too, that my latest resolution was to urge the administration to just tear down Date Street. Let's send an example to the community that if you build after notice of violation and a stop work order is issued, this is what will happen. You will be torn down. It's been on the books, but look, let's go ahead and enforce it now. With regard to short-term rentals, the, when you have a 37-bedroom structure in the form of a monster house, it's not being used to fill the affordable housing gap, which some people have stated. We have clear evidence that they're being used for vacation rentals. So you stop these structures and treat them as, as they truly should be, which are their apartment buildings. If they want to change their zoning, they have to go through the right processes, and I don't think that it would pass in residential neighborhoods. We also have to enforce the law on the books. We have, we have the law that states you cannot have more than five unrelated people living in a residential structure. We need to enforce, and we need to tax them appropriately.
What do you think about the short-term rental?
Well, two things. I think the administration and the city council has dropped the ball. Well, the mayor tried to do something with that bill, you know, which I didn't agree with, but the city council's been kicking the can down the road for years. They haven't done anything, and guess what happens? They've been proliferating all over the place. They're up in Wilhelmina Rise, they're in Hawaii Kai, they're all over the place.
So what is the key, do you think?
So TVUs, I mean, we, it's zoning, right? We zoned the resort area in Waikiki. Residential areas are for residential areas. Now, that's not to say that a small forum of bed and breakfasts, you know, I'd be open to, at least we should discuss it, but TVUs where you rent out the entire home, I don't think that's a good idea at all.
Where do you stand on that in particular?
We're waiting for the DPP to send us back three bills.
Department of Planning.
Yeah, Department of Planning and Permitting to send us back three bills that the city council passed out. The zoning chair has stated that she's committed to passing something out by the end of the year. I'm committed to trying to get something done as well by the end of the year. And I think that if we continue to work with all the stakeholders in the community, including the mayor and the administration, something that they will be able to enforce, that's a great idea. Stopping these structures, though, stops the, you know, supply from increasing on these structures. I mean.
Can I ask you, do you think that most of the monster homes are truly being built as TVUs, as transit vacation?
I think, I think some of them are mixed. Some of them are for care homes, I believe, licensed and unlicensed. I think some of them are for either.
Large family?
Large, well, no, I don't think that they're for one family. They may be for three or four families in the rare occasion. I think some of them are dorm-like facilities near the University of Hawaii that I've seen. But you know what? If they want to be an apartment building, they need to continue to go through that process, elevate it. Maybe there's, maybe there's a compromise near, near the University of Hawaii. That's what people have said, well, these things make sense near UH, instead of just cramming them up in Manoa where it doesn't make sense.
Well, I know Airbnb gave you a donation, but I don't think you really answered the question whether or not you're for or against TVUs. I think I'm very clear on that, that it's not a good idea. It changes the, the way our neighborhoods are.
So you're saying that they should just play not be legal, not be, most of them are illegal now, but I mean, if you, what you're saying is that you, like what the mayor has proposed, that in residential areas, they shouldn't be allowed at all and should be strong enforcement. Do you agree with that as a position?
Well, I think that the mayor's proposal was a start, finally, and I think that we're getting somewhere. The city council, like I said, passed out three bills. I am not for the TVUs just proliferating in our neighborhoods. I expect our residential neighborhoods to be residential, so I have been very clear on that, and I do want enforcement.
You're not for TVUs proliferating, but you're for TVUs?
I'm not for TVUs.
Okay, good. Next, next question. Okay, so you're the one who brought up homeless.
He's a defense attorney.
Well, you guys are both attorneys, so. The, you brought up homelessness, so what would you do about it? I mean, it's been a struggle for several years now. What do you think's the key to getting, to taking care of it?
So a few weeks ago, after one of our public forums in Waikiki, a constituent invited me to walk with him through Waikiki, and I spent four hours walking through Waikiki, right? And I walked from the zoo up to seaside, down to Kohiwa, and back. And there were people on the side of the road with, or not even on the side of the road, on sidewalks with signs that say, hey, I need money for drugs and beer, right? Just ridiculous. Why are these people on our sidewalks? They should not be there. Now, these are, these should be considered separately from people who are suffering from mental illness and people who are suffering from just being, being poor, right? The vagrants is a huge problem, and part of the problem is our system where they get arrested, they go into court, they get credit for time served, one-day jail, and then within hours, they're backed on the street again. And OTRPC, it's too expensive to house them there. So we got to figure out a detention-type facility where people can get services and they can't go back on the street again. Now, we got to work with all stakeholders to make sure that we, we comply with the, with common decency and whatnot with the ACLU. But the fact of the matter is, you shouldn't be allowed to go right back on that sidewalk. I was threatened, by the way. This guy told me he was going to blow my head off because I was looking at his sign. I didn't say a word to him. And people are spending a lot of money to come to Hawaii in Waikiki to, to enjoy their week of paradise, and they have to deal with people like this. To me, it's unacceptable.
What's your response to what he's saying?
Well, I think that specifically, the question was too about sidewalks and.
Well, no, the question was just generally the homeless problem.
Homeless, yeah, so.
Basically, to add to the caller's.
I just want to make sure I answer their question.
I don't, I don't walk or go for swims at the beach because of scary homeless men.
Right, so you know what? Homelessness is a huge problem, obviously. If we can get more enforcement, number one, equally, 225, 225 homeless were actually removed off the slopes of Diamond Head, and at the time, some of the constituents in the area were concerned because as they looked out at their back patio, they saw fires throughout the night on the slope of Diamond, Diamond Head, and they were worried about, you know, their house burning on fire. They asked me, Trevor, how many people were, had outstanding warrants in that area? How many people were, you know, arsonists or sexual predators? We have three kids. I asked the questions to, actually to the governor's homeless coordinator, as well as the mayor's office. They said, so long as these people complied with the law and complied with getting off of the property, they didn't check anybody. You know, meanwhile, we got people walking through Kapiolani Park, good upstanding citizens, walking through, getting petty misdemeanors for being in a park closure. And number one, I think that we need to show that we're willing to enforce laws such as trespassing on public property or private property and make it not so easy for them to stay around in these areas. In Waikiki and the pavilions, it's been outright nefarious and illegal activity. I've proposed to, to come up with a solution, whether it's tearing down the pavilions so that our lifeguards don't have to be choosing between helping there behind them or saving somebody in the water, but.
Let me, let me throw this question to both of you, okay? Because what I'm hearing from both of you is, we shouldn't let these people be doing illegal things, we shouldn't let them be getting in and out of court and not having a place to go. But what about resources to actually house people, resources to actually treat people? Do you feel like the city, and you're the council budget chair, is putting enough resource into this issue?
We've put in, we've put in a lot of money. Over the last few years, we've put in over $100 million toward this effort. We've even, we even have a Department of Land Management now that actually is purchasing units around town, mostly low-rise buildings, and putting people in transitional housing directly off the street housing first initiatives. I think that we got to continue to see if we can help these people that want to get back on their feet with low, shallow subsidies so that they can rent their own facilities because the solution can't be that we just continue to buy more and more and more buildings because we're not going to be able to maintain them. Additionally, I think that we need to go with innovative solutions such as the Koili Street Hygiene Center, which me and councilmember Joey Manahan initiated together after, after seeing one in the mainland. And we brought down the director of the Low Income Housing Institute of Seattle to actually help on that. And on there, we're going to have healthcare services to lower the inundation of Queen's emergency room.
Thanks.
When you're dealing with mental thinking, when you're dealing with.
Yeah, my question specifically was about resources. Do we need to put more money into it, or are we wasting money?
No, I think the state, city, and even the federal government, we all have to work together to solve this problem. We have to make it a concerted effort and a goal to do this, right? It's appalling that we haven't done so, in my mind, right? So it's not just a matter of putting the resources there, it's being smart with our taxpayer money. You know, again, I'm walking door to door, and on Sierra Drive, there was this house called the Sierra House. And initially, when I walked and I looked at my list, geez, there's a lot of registered voters here in this house. It turns out that it was a home for people suffering from mental illness. And you know what? It works. And how many of those do you see around in the community? You don't see too many, right? Those types of things, I think, will work. You're taking people off the street.
We've only got two more minutes, so this is why I'm being rude, but.
No problem.
Is that, the last question that I'd like to throw out, and again, only about a minute each on this, is the, the rubbish system, you know? Bulky item pick is, has got to be a big issue in your guys' district, too. What do you do about that? I mean, what, what's the change? You know, the mayor proposed a fee for bulky item pickup appointments, got shot down by the council. What's the, what's the answer? What is the solution to the bulky item pickup thing?
Well, first and foremost, I don't think that charging people a fee for their trash pickup is the solution. In fact, we killed that proposal from the mayor this year. And second of all, I believe that we need to allow the, the routes in Hawaii Kai area specifically, and New Valley and East, you know, specifically from Aina Haina on to Hawaii Kai, to be able to go not just to Middle Street's transfer, transfer station. They need to be allowed to go around the winward side to, you know, the other transfer station out there so that it's actually closer. The worst route, from what I've been told, that all the new drivers have to do is Kalama Valley. It's the farthest one, they can't do an extra route, they got to go so far, then they're at the back of the line when they come to Middle.
So it needs to be better managed.
Change, change the route system to allow East Honolulu to have the option to go to the winward side.
Okay, 40 seconds.
Yes, real quick. I also oppose a fee for, for bulky item pickup. I think, you know, a good director of a department is like a good coach, right? You got to motivate people, belong to a team, and get the team working because, guess what? We all live in this community, we all got to work together, and that's part of the team, is getting that bulky item picked up on time. You know, I can recall, people who see these bulky items, they just stop their truck and they just unload their truck full of stuff, and that just has to stop. But Waimea has a transfer station just right on the corner from Kalama Valley.
You guys actually agree with something. Okay, great, well, thanks both of you. It's time now to thank the two of you, and now we need to move on next to the Honolulu City Council District. Thank you, though, to Tommy Waters and councilmember Ozawa. We're going to do a quick change, and we'll return in a few minutes to hear from the two candidates running for the Honolulu City Council in District Eight. Please enjoy this Hikino story from Waianae High School, and we'll be right back.
Not enough time.
Kuha'aheo. Kuha'aheo means to stand firm and to be pa'ua, to be strong. And I feel like as Hawaiians, we should be pa'ua to our culture.
Polynesian Voyaging Society captain Lehuakamalu believes this is the time to look for the helpers.
Our, our whole organization is built off the help of others. It's a whole community that launches a canoe, they say, and it really is true. Every part of your community has to come together for you to make a voyage happen.
I'm for clear today.
For a 15-year-old Kristen Kai level, this is the dream. Selling the Hoku Leo, a Hawaiian cultural icon that first set sail in 1975.
I just love being connected with, you know, as a Hawaiian, to do the cultural practices as what people did back then.
It's always been a dream of mine to just step on that boat.
Her connection to this moment is much deeper than just being on this canoe.
Being involved in the ocean and just going out and paddling is part of our culture, and Hawaiian culture was just built in me since I was a little kid.
But for a long time, Hawaiian culture was something that was not practiced, but buried.
And there's a reason for that because 200 years ago, there was a new wave of exploration that came from, from the Western world.
Nanoa Thompson, master navigator and the president of the Polynesian Voyaging Society, is one of the stars in the revival of traditional voyaging arts in Polynesia.
And things change for native Hawaiians, and the loss of population, loss of culture, loss of language, and, and, which is the same kind of chronic story that is throughout all native people on the planet.
If I didn't get to practice my Hawaiian culture, I would be angry.
That anger is one that also sparked the dream of the Hawaiian cultural revival that is still being navigated today.
So this canoe that we're sitting on or standing on today is really a dream that was created by many, many people that went back as far as they could in history and come up with the design of the traditional ancient voyaging canoe. And so, this is a spaceship of our ancestors.
And making the voyage happen is about tying together the past, present, and future.
I love to hear about young people who are already in the water, who are so connected to it and want to learn more.
And then we need young people to take the challenge, to step forward, to take this canoe away from my generation and sail it.
It's important for us to learn what he knows so that we can become explorers and sailors before, you know, this tradition would just become extinct and no one will know how great it was to just sail.
This is Tyler Bright from Waianae High School for Hikino.
Welcome back. For this next half hour, we're featuring the two candidates running for the Honolulu City Council District Eight, which runs from Lower Aia through Pearl City to Waipahu. Please continue to email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a live stream of this program at pbshawaii.org and the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Our volunteers are still here, there they are, they're looking, ready for some more calls. Please keep them busy. Now to our guests. Our first is Kelly Kitashima. Kitashima, I apologize. A resident of Aia, she's a hotel executive and a 2016 Miss Hawaii United States. Next is incumbent Brandon Elefante. He is a lifelong resident of the Pearl City and Aia communities. He chairs the, I have to say this slowly, Public Health, Safety, and Welfare Committee on the council. Let me start with you, Kitty Kitashima. What made you decide to run?
I know, that's a fascinating question, isn't it? You know, I come from a perspective of a mother. I have two kids, Kainalu and Kahial, who are 14 and six. And I also came from the private sector, so I work in the hospitality industry, so I think I'm the only candidate here with private sector experience in hospitality. And, you know, over the last decade, the framework of our community has certainly changed, and the dynamics has certainly changed. And as a mother, I'm genuinely concerned for the rising cost here, living in Hawaii. I want to make sure that our keke and especially my kids are able to return home one day. Increased crime, the rail does go directly through our district, small businesses have closed, and, you know, my heart went out. And so I felt, coming from such a different perspective of a mother and someone coming from the private sector, that I could offer a different option with some fundamentally different ideas.
Councilman Elefante, are you, what are you focusing on in this campaign? What are people telling you that they want to see improved?
So what I've been hearing going door-to-door, and thank you for having us, Daryl, and to PBS as well, and to the viewers, what I've been hearing is multiple things, like infrastructure, sustainability, homelessness, transportation. Those are key, critical things. Housing is another big issue, and having the affordable housing costs in the community. And infrastructure can also includes our parks as well. You know, we really need to pay close attention to a lot of that. We're an aging community as well, and we also have a lot of newcomers to our community as well, where people are just getting started with their families, or maybe millennials buying their home for the first time. So it's integrating all that, and then also making sure that we integrate that with rail that's already in our community and not online just yet.
You know, you've been a big supporter of the rail system, and sometimes it's uncomfortable to support the rail system. How do you feel in your district it's been going? Do you feel like it's, people are accepting it and excited about it? And what kind of opportunities does it bring?
I feel that way. You know, rail has been in our community now for many years, and we're just starting with phase one...
Well, a big rail thing.
Right.
There's no rail going, right?
Guideways done, yes, yeah.
But, you know, the exciting news is, you know, we're starting phase one of reconstruction for Kamamea Highway, which is coming from Acacia Road, where the Pearl Island Shopping Center is, to the Hiko Waila Power Plant. And then phase two will begin next year. So a lot of that is road repaving for that area, as well as really looking at transit-oriented development. You know, I authored and championed rail legislation, TOD legislation in Waipahu, some of the first TOD zonings that's gotten proven. That will really revitalize the community, look at more housing options, whether they be for our kapuna, or first-time homeowners, or people that are just making ends meet.
I know that, from looking at your materials, you're not opposed to rail.
Absolutely not. And I lived in the mainland for five years, so I am a huge fan of public transportation.
So let me go ask, what do you, how do you think it's been managed? How do you feel about that?
And this is where I go back to private sector, you know, managing a team, managing a budget. I'm highly concerned over the costs, the overruns, the change orders. I think there's a lot of questions that have not been asked. Just, you know, simple things, like what's the rate schedule? Why are we so behind schedule? Where is the funding for the maintenance going to come from? What's the ridership going to look like? You know, when you think about it, the rail is actually going to start in Kapolei, start dwell, go to Eva. So by the time it gets to us, is there going to be enough room for ridership once it gets to our area of the island? So there's a lot of questions I have. Certainly, there is, I know, a charter in regards to transparency and having more integration with the heart relations. But there are a lot of outstanding questions, and the budget, for me, is a high concern that I definitely want to get to the bottom of.
You know, in our last conversation with the two candidates from the fourth district...
Sure.
They seem to have a strong difference over, they both say, oh, property taxes shouldn't go to rail. But ultimately, isn't property taxes going to have to go to rail, do you think?
I think I probably agree with the two prior tests. As a homeowner, I think our property has already gone up organically, so there certainly is, should be a surplus. But no, I'm highly opposed to using property taxes for the construction of rail. Just one last comment. I think, you know, speaking with rail executives, they have actually been able to make some internal changes to the expense line, so we're actually, hopefully, don't need the money that we really are being asked for.
Just one more question on rail for you, councilman. What do you see as the biggest, you know, shadow hanging over the project at this point?
Well, I think the biggest shadow is really seeing how we finish the minimum operating segment. And then look at also spurs that go to UH Manoa, that could go to West Kapolei and different areas and different parts of the rail. I look at it as a spine. So it's really, how do we get to finishing the minimum operating segment from Kapolei all the way to Alamoana Center? How do we do that? And then looking to see how we integrate the transit-oriented developments, which the city council has been having conversations with the administration and as well as the community, and looking at how we can integrate a lot of these different plans that come together that align with our transportation infrastructure.
I do have a question from a viewer, and it's directed at you, councilman. Please comment on your views and voting record in regards to monster homes being built in the neighborhoods. Is that something you see quite a lot of in the eighth district?
We do have a few monster homes in the district, and what I will say to that is that, you know, the council has an interim moratorium that is in place that looks at these large dwelling units that are in communities. And the first thing we see is parking, you know, more people parking, different people coming in the community in these large type of structures. So that interim impacts any future building permits for the meantime. But the long-term solution is really looking at the planning commission and proposals that are before them to look at, how do we address these type of large dwelling structures in terms of their square feet, you know, limitations on certain things? There's also a current law on unrelated, you know, not supposed to have more than a certain number of unrelated. So it's enforcing that, and it's enforcing our current existing codes, but also looking at new tools to look at, how do we hamper down on these large structures as well?
You mentioned enforcement. Do you think that enforcement has been adequate? Or do you think it's a law problem, or a lack of will, or a lack of resources problem?
I think there's multiple things involved. And just having conversations with the city's Department of Planning and Permitting, a lot of it is, you know, inspectors. There's also been a huge exodus of people retiring with their wealth of knowledge, or even attracting people working in the city's Department of Planning and Permitting. So that's one part of it. The other part is looking at a different set of tools that we can use for enforcement, and how do we address that? And then in different areas for zoning and whatnot. So we have to look at all those options and really do our best to really serve and protect the community.
How do you feel about how it's been handled so far?
There's definitely, yes, it is saddened. You know, like Brandon said, our community is very immature. It's multi-generational. These foreign investors that are coming in and taking advantage of our beautiful communities should be held responsible. There was a current Bill 53. I think you voted in opposition to that. I would have not voted in opposition to that.
What's Bill 53?
For stricter fines on current monster homes. Again, we need to hold them accountable, and yes, there is issues within the, you know, Department of Planning and Permitting. But, you know, we need to show these developers that are fully taking advantage of the system that they cannot do this to our communities.
Do you disagree with that concept?
So what I will say is to address the no vote on 53, as being explained. What was one of the unintended consequences for my reason for my no vote? Say if you're a homeowner and you construct the fence or something. Now, there's no sort of leeway in terms of negotiating with the city's Department of Planning and Permitting, so you're stuck with that unintended consequence of that huge fine. And there's not, you know, being able to. And there is a process that is involved. And so that's one of my main reasons for someone that could be, you know, just a person wanting to improve their property line and whatnot, that's an unintended consequence that they may not be aware about for this. And that's the reason why I voted no on that.
Neither of you have mentioned homelessness yet as a major problem in your district, but my perception, and I pass through the district quite a lot, I, you know, used the bikeway at Pearl Harbor, and, which is pretty bad. Would you support a ban on homelessness combined with a guaranteed right to housing for all Hawaii residents? Let's use that as a step-off point, and why don't I start with you?
Sure.
How do you feel about that? How bad is the problem in your district, and what kind of things do you think have to happen?
Well, it certainly has improved. I mean, to your point, right? I mean, the bike path, you know, which is, goes right through Waipahu, Pearl City, and Aia was a homeless encampment for a while, and it has been recently cleaned up. I guess, in conjunction to that question, I kind of go back to the sit-lie ban, which was passed yesterday. I would be in full support of an island-wide sit-lie ban. I don't think it's fair that there is a sit-lie ban in certain areas of the island, but there's not one for Aia, Pearl City, or Waipahu. I think it needs to be consistent for HPD and to ensure that there's enforcement. But the listener is absolutely right. You know, when we have laws in place, we have people to enforce them, but we have to have the services needed to service these mental health issues, to the chronically homeless, to the families that are out there. I mean, it's heartbreaking, right? Some families are just paycheck to paycheck away. So there's, I know it's such a complex issue. Perhaps I'm not addressing the exact question, but I do support an island-wide sit-lie ban because I don't think our community should be left out. And with all the sweeps, they have gravitated towards our area. I live in a suburb area of Aia, and there is a little homeless community there, if you can imagine. So they use the bathroom, and, you know, they hang their clothes. And, you know, at the end of the day, I am just here to protect our keke, our kapuna, and the safety of our community.
You know, you have been one of the, pretty consistent in voting against some of the tougher enforcement tactics. Why is that, and what do you see as the solution?
Well, what I see as part of the solution of that is something that I looked at four years ago when I first ran, is looking at housing first. Housing first is something that has been modeled after certain other cities in the mainland, where you look at putting some of our most chronic homeless into housing and stabilizing them so that they get the services and wraparound services, and then transition them, hopefully, back into society. The city has done that with the Navigation Center in Santa Island, as well as the Kaueki Village, right? Also off of Nimitz, you know, where families are coming there. There needs to be more of that. You know, in the district that we represent, there's actually no homeless shelter. There may be some transitional homes. I mean, we used to have the Waipahu Lighthouse. So the nearest one is either in town or out on the Leeward Coast. So it makes it difficult. And what I've found is that these people have a face, you know? And while there may be some that may be in violation of the law, and enforcement, you know, will take its place for them, and them being addressed in that way, there's some people that, you know, just are unable to afford just the cost of everyday living.
Let me ask a more specific question, something you may be faced with, and perhaps you'll be faced with it if you win. The idea of Ohana Zones, the state is preparing to offer money to construct Ohana Zones in, or some form of Ohana Village-type housing. Would you support something like that? You mentioned there's nothing in your district. Would you support an Ohana Zone in your district? You think that would help?
I think there has to be more discussion on that. And the reason why I say that is, if, what comes to mind is Ala Park in town, you know, where that was kind of, sort of, a safe zone, a safe area. We've seen the ramifications of that, and I would have concerns on that. I think we have to fully integrate it, not so much in that sense, but in a way that we can provide and look for property that state or city has in different areas where they're integrated into the community, and get the wraparound services, whether it be mental, or it could be also other types of disorders that they're dealing with, that they really need those programs that we have to provide for more of those resources.
How do you feel about an Ohana Zone idea? And do you feel like, I mean, he just described years of process, housing first and so on, but, I mean, do you think things have gotten better?
I do not think things have gotten better. However, I am excited that there is a new homeless task force. I am excited for that. I know it's not a short game, it's going to be a long game. But definitely, I think we need to research a little bit more into Ohana Zones. But I would definitely be in favor of collaborating with private sectors or nonprofits and making sure that they're funded, to ensure that they do get the services they need for mental health services, and also even just something as simple as transportation. So let's just say someone is homeless and is ready and willing to take the help and the shelter, and they don't have a right to get there. So providing kind of that city funding to allocate towards making sure that as soon as that person is ready to get on board, we are ready to get them to that service. So there's a little bit of an opportunity there for us to fund.
So both of you would be uncomfortable if someone said, oh, we're going to put an Ohana Zone in my problem?
At this moment, for sure, yeah. There definitely needs to be more research.
There has to be, yeah, more discussion and collaboration with the community.
Okay, so a specific question, but we can use this as a springboard for something else, is, could the candidates talk about paving Waimano Home Road? I don't know much about that issue, but you have a lot of roads that are pretty rough in there.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Why is that such a big issue?
Well, Waimano Home Road, it's a corridor that connects to Palisades and comes down into Pearl City and Aia, Waipahu, whether you're going east or west. Something we could, you know, take a look at and take a look into in terms of what a timeline is for that.
It is paved.
But Komo Mai was a huge section going up to Palisades that we paved, so there's certain pockets in the community that we have, whether it's done by seal coating, slurry seal, or full reconstruction.
Okay, so this is what I'm thinking about, a springboard.
Sure.
Is that, the one experience that I have in your guys' district is the traffic is terrible.
Oh, my gosh, don't get me started.
Well, I'll get you started.
I endure everything, yeah.
But I mean, is there, what's going on? What happened in that community that you guys ended up with so many choke points, so many big commercial things, and such small roads for the most part, right?
I know, don't get my husband started. He, you know, we, as soon as we exit the Aia off-ramp and you get onto Kamamea Highway, and now with the stations being built, it goes from four lanes to two lanes. You know, so something that I would have loved to kind of take a study on was, you know, is there a possibility for contra-flow? The traffic going eastbound, was there an opportunity for contra-flow? Again, businesses, could we have given them some sort of exemption during the time of construction? But you're absolutely right, the traffic and the road conditions are very, very frustrating. And to go back to Waimano Home Road, no, it is a major thoroughfare. I would also add that I would not be in support of it completing, or converting into a complete street as well, which is something that's on the books.
Oh, that's a whole nother thing, yeah. But do you feel that the city has put enough resources into the transportation infrastructure in your district? And if not, where do you see getting money to do that?
Right, not, I would say, no, not proactively. I think what we're doing is reactionary. So perhaps, again, going back to that heart and city relationship, you know, when we knew these stations were going to be built, why were we not already proactively having these dialogues and having these conversations on, okay, traffic is going to be from four lanes to two lanes in this massive thoroughfare through Aia, which is, again, feeding a ton of businesses, a ton of families getting home after a long day? The proactive approach on what could have been done, and that's the situation that we're in now.
Do you feel the same way?
Well, we definitely can look at utilizing more of our resources towards that, as I mentioned earlier, about infrastructure and road repaving. And I know, in working with the administration and the mayor's first four years, there was a lot of money and allocation towards road repaving and infrastructure. So the lot has come to fruition, only now that we're seeing. Certainly, we can do more.
Do you think, though, that you have, even in your district, even, let's say they did repave Cam Highway and get it all fixed up? I mean, is there enough ways to get cars in and out of your district? It feels like you're perpetual state of congestion with or without the rail.
Well, there's a lot of people that commute through the district, you know, coming, whether they're going home to Eva, Kapolei, or somewhere on the west side. And what we have to take into consideration is that we're also a growing population as well. You know, also on the books is Koha Ridge and Ho'opili, and that's going to be having more homes, and then future plans in different areas and different neighborhoods. So a lot of the population has been directed as part of our general plan, looking out to the west. to the west. And part of that is to protect our rural and country areas. And one sense of relief for that is on what I believe is our rail system.
You know, the rail system providing opportunities for housing development could generate some pretty dense spots along the railroad. How do you feel about that? Are you, should there be like height limits or anything? Because some of the things they proposed in your guys' district is pretty big, right?
Right, yeah, you know, it's kind of saddened. I don't know for the old cam drive-in, if you can imagine, it's just now a sea of cars that are being held there. You know, I know there was an urban plan for that area, and unfortunately, that got mixed. But yeah, there is some major opportunity for us to have some, like you said, vibrant work-play areas. My concern is I don't think the infrastructure has even been laid down yet. So although we can talk about, you know, all these amazing projects and housing and different sorts of areas, we have to make sure that we have the infrastructure. So if the infrastructure's not there, you know, where's the money going to come from? And, you know, how are we going to get there?
How big is the problem of being able to be ready for this kind of development in your district?
Well, part of that is having the continued dialogue and conversations. When I first got into office, we were just talking about the Waipahu transit-oriented development. So the community has been involved over the years to look at ways in terms of height limit, density, what type of mixed uses they would want in the community. There's already condos, as well as a regional shopping center, Pearl Ridge Center, that's already in the heart of the district. So it's not new to development in that sense, but nothing has been developed over the years. So we have to cautiously approach that as we move forward. Yet, as we look at these existing parcels that some of the other landowners may own, you know, private property owners, who may be willing to want to look at revitalization or develop, and some may not be interested at all.
You know, in our prior conversation, and we got a question from a viewer that I didn't, he didn't have a chance to get to, but as council members, you will be making decisions about the whole island.
Of course.
And the question was about Uber and Lyft, which is very contentious.
Sure.
Where do you stand on that? Do you feel like the taxi industry needs to be protected from these kinds of companies? Or do you think it's going to be encouraged?
Actually, I'm a very hands-on approach. My managerial style is a very hands-on approach. So I actually have met with several taxi cab companies. I've yet to meet with Uber and Lyft, but I do use both services. The one thing that I was shocked to find out was that in 2016, the city took away some of the requirements as far as background checks. And so it really comes down for me a public safety issue and making sure that the consumer's protected. So although they're two completely separate models, I certainly think we need to protect the local cab companies. But then I also think that Uber and Lyft need to kind of step up to the plate and ensure that their drivers are also compliant and ensure that their background checks are up to par and up to standards, because they are carrying, you know, local families and ensuring that they're getting to their destination safe. So it's about safety and consumer protection.
Do you think, though, I mean, you've been, I think you've been on the side of trying to prevent overregulation of Uber and Lyft on the council, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. And part of that is, you know, I do agree in terms of the consumer, putting them at mind, whether they ride a transit network, transportation network company like Uber or Lyft, or if they ride a taxi company. So we need to ensure that. And as part of that is, there's been a whole paradigm shift, not just here in Hawaii, across the nation, across the world, in how people utilize that first and last mile, whether it be getting to other transportation things, or how do they get from point A to point B. So as a city council member, we have to ensure that those safeguards are in place, that we also do regulate. And one of my main things that I stress to Uber and Lyft is basically the general excise tax, although the city doesn't require that. Instead, they require that to their independent contractors to complete that. And because that they are an operator independent contractor, I feel that they should be doing that. But they do provide, you know, great service, and I think it's important to make sure that there's a fair balance with that.
Well, we're talking about, you know, web-based services, obviously, vacation rentals. Where do you stand on the vacation rentals? How, the specific question that came up in our last conversation was whether you should allow people to rent out their entire home residential area or only allow bed and breakfast, as the mayor has proposed. How do you feel about it? Where do you stand on that?
Yeah, you know, especially coming from the tourism and the hospitality sector, you're right. I mean, the industry is so dynamic. It has changed in the last five to 10 years, where you, before, you used to use a travel agent, right? Now everybody looks, books and online. So keeping up with those travel trends, home sharing is a very popular way of vacationing. And it's more economical. It's popular for sports teams, for family reunions, for weddings. So to completely eliminate it, I know we're working with quite antiquated, I think, laws from like the 1980s. I certainly think a step forward is looking at some sort of permitting process, leaving residential completely out. Residential is just saved for residents in the framework of our community. But I think there is opportunity for certain popular tourist destinations, for example, the North Shore or, you know, beachfront properties. There's also technology now. I know the ledge was very, very concerned about collecting the TAT. But again, utilizing technology towards our advantage, there's technology, and there's components that we can actually partner with and ensure that the homeowner actually pays these taxes electronically with a legal permitting system.
You know, how do you feel about that position?
Well, you know, we do thrive on tourism, but we also have to look at and address the resident concerns that, and communities may be experiencing that. We do need to look at enforcement. We do need to look at areas, you know, that could potentially have, you know, maybe opened that up as a part of discussion. The Planning Commission in the last several weeks has held hearings on particular measures relating to TVUs and B&Bs, and they didn't approve any of that. So now that comes to the council, and we have to go through our process and deliberate and have further discussions on this issue.
Where would you, how would you, what's your best idea about a balance?
Well, I think a balance is that, I know there are some that are already here, you know, they're existing in our communities. It's making sure that, one, you know, if they're operating as a business, that they pay their taxes in that sense, and that they come into legality and that they are legal. But there has to be some sort of threshold and balance for that, and...
So not too many, but you're not against them per se in a residential area?
That's what I would say. But I think we also have to really look and look at it island-wide, just not in Aia, Pearl City, Waipahu, it's an island-wide issue.
And it's a huge economic driver. I mean, we have to look at the data. I mean, it is a multi-billion dollar industry. So, you know, if, you know, we're looking at city revenues, right? I mean, we, you know, need to be creative and open-minded, but also be cognizant of our community.